Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Ms. Dougherty?
Here.
Mr. Gendron?
Here.
Mr. Gignac?
Here.
Mr. Hoey? Mayor Kennedy.
Yeah.
Six present, one absent.
All right, the first order of business is a special order of business, a spotlight on excellence for the summer reading program. Deputy Superintendent Durkin?
Thank you, Mayor. As you look around these council chambers, it's pretty amazing to see all these wonderful students with their families here to support them, so I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Robin Desmond to share with you our special event tonight.
Thank you, Deputy Assistant Superintendent Durkin. I wanted to first start off by saying that this is our 10th year of the summer reading program, grades K to 8. I want to thank our families, parents, guardians, for working with their children at home this summer to encourage summer reading. I also want to thank our staff for supporting this effort, as well as some community partners who helped to provide us with some special promotions to make this a fun event for everybody. I also want to especially thank the Lowell School Committee for always enthusiastically welcoming everybody here and celebrating this summer reading event. So what we're going to do is I'm going to start by reading the children's names in order, alphabetical order, by school. Every student received a certificate who participated, and then each school had a drawing, and there were three students selected from the drawing to represent their school here tonight. So we will start with the Bailey School. Representing the Bartlett School, Jonathan Rosadio Hebert. John Mathi. Rafael Torres Vasquez. Representing the Butler School, Lawrence Chapu Marx. And Veronica Porce. Representing the Daly School is Harrison Ho. Jacob Turgen. Representing the Greenwich School is Chloe Lynn Adams. Salfat Namina, Namana? Representing the Lincoln School is Augusta May. Theodore Mies. Representing the McCullough School is Justin Ambrosio. Representing the McAven School is Natalie Ahie. Ryan Hu. Representing the Moody School is Evelyn D. Olivera. Representing the Maury School is Brandon Seasingthong. Representing the Merklin School is Malia Rai. Ruby Vang. Representing the Patacautville School is Nihai Nguyen. May Bell Shah. Representing the Pine Arts School is Savannah Bartlett. Selena Farah. Representing the Riley School is Jonathan Brown. Representing the Robinson School is Matthew Bergerin. Jedex Bow. Representing the Shaughnessy is Lillian Cabral? From the STEM Academy, Rayanna Kinner. Richard Triv. From the Stokolosis School is Buchanan Chim. Carolyn Chim. Miriam Kang. From the Sullivan School, Matthew Bado. Christopher Poma Chan. Representing the Wang School is Terrence Lorn. Molly Shribman. Julie Thatch. From the Washington School, Joel Camillo. That concludes our summer reading representatives. Thank you all, and I'd like everyone to receive a round of applause from the audience.
Before you leave, can we try to do a group picture with everybody, with all of the kids up here and the members of the school committee? So just...
I also want to just thank Melissa Newell, who is our coordinator for English Language Arts, who puts all this together.
I think last year we had a kid climb right up on the table and stand right in the back, if I remember correctly. And then it'll have, you turn it sideways, or the other way. You'll turn it, I think, that way, and then you start at one side, and then you, once you press the button, you start, and then... Jeez. How broken you go, man. Can I rain?
Paparazzi back here.
This is the fun part.
Terrence, Terrence!
I'm right here.
Okay, you want to find your mom?
Yeah, he's mine.
Congratulations.
Have a good night, congratulations.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a nice feature.
we go any further, I would just like to introduce to everybody the new student representative, which will be Sophia Mazdin. Sophia, you want to...
Hi, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here and for the opportunity of having Lowell High School represented on here. I know a lot of students are super excited about it, and we're really excited to see where it takes us.
And Sophia, I believe, is also a student senator, right?
Yes.
At Lowell High School.
I think he's over there.
All right, so next we have the minutes, the approval of the minutes of the regular school committee meeting of Wednesday, September 20, 2017, for acceptance. We have a motion to accept the minutes by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Discussion on the minutes, Ms. Dakota?
Actually, before we do the minutes, could we get just a brief report from Superintendent Desmond about the summer reading program? Just, I'd love to hear how much the kids read, but we didn't get to hear that, so thank you.
Thank you. So this year, this year, as the children were reading, we asked them to do a couple of things. We asked them to keep summer logs, where they recorded their thoughts, feelings, and ideas around what they were reading. We also had them participate in the Scholastic Reading Program, where they total the number of books read and minutes. And this year, students who participated read a total of 41,495 books, which totaled 4,559,632 minutes. And although last year we thought we did really well, we increased our number of books by 14,000 books this year. So we really did well this year. And we'll continue to promote that, thanks to your help and the efforts of the students and staff and families and community partners, continue to promote this further next summer. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, the, we have the mission, the minutes for acceptance, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Next is permission to enter. Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a motion approved from anybody? Motion approved by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Gendron. Discussion, Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. One of the things on the permission to enter is to move forward with a new special education bus company, and I'm not against doing that. I do have a motion on later in the agenda, which, I don't know, do you want to talk about it now or wait till we get to that point?
If there's no objection, we can take the motion up at the same time, and also, there were three people, there were several people, I guess, that wanted to speak on this issue, and none of them have registered to speak, but we've, we've allowed three for three minutes each. So if there's no objection, we'll take up the motion at the same time, and the motion reads, request that the superintendent provide the committee with a report regarding alternative options for special ed transportation services that will provide newer buses for the district, as well as include any suggested changes to the current protocols to improve student transportation safety. Motion seconded by Mr. Gignac. Ms. Dougherty, on the motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. So part of that is being addressed here with this suggestion to move to this bus company, which I don't have strong feelings either way, but I was looking to make sure that whatever we do, we get the newer buses, that you have to, the driver has to walk to the back of the bus and push a button or indicate in some way. Without that, there's an alarm or flashing lights or something, you can't leave the bus. And then the other piece of my motion was really to look at, you know, I mean, we follow protocol, and thank God this child was fine, you know, that he... And this year, students who participated read a total of forty-one thousand, four hundred ninety-five books, which totaled four million, five hundred fifty-nine thousand, six hundred thirty-two minutes. And although last year we thought we did really well, we increased our number of books by fourteen thousand books this year. So we really did well this year. And we'll continue to promote that, thanks to your help and the efforts of the students and staff and families and community partners, continue to promote this further next summer. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, the, we have the minutes for acceptance, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Next is permission to enter. Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a motion approved from anybody?
I move approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Genner. Discussion, Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. One of the things on the permission to enter is to move forward with a new special education bus company. And I'm not against doing that. I do have a motion on later in the agenda, which, I don't know, do you want to talk about it now or wait till we get to that point?
If there's no objection, we can take the motion up at the same time. And also, there were three people, there were several people, I guess, that wanted to speak on this issue, and none of them have registered to speak, but we've allowed three for three minutes each. So if there's no objection, we'll take up the motion at the same time. And the motion reads, request that the superintendent provide the committee with a report regarding alternative options for special ed transportation services that will provide newer buses for the district, as well as include any suggested changes to the current protocols to improve student transportation safety. Motion seconded by Mr. Gignac. Ms. Doherty on the motion?
Thank you, Your Honor. So part of that is being addressed here with this suggestion to move to this bus company, which I don't have strong feelings either way, but I was looking to make sure that whatever we do, we get the newer buses, that you have to, the driver has to walk to the back of the bus and push a button or indicate in some way. Without that, there's an alarm or flashing lights or something, you can't leave the bus. And then the other piece of my motion was really to look at, you know, I mean, we follow protocol and thank God this child was fine, you know, that he wasn't hurt. But I'm wondering if we could beef up that protocol. So that's where I was asking for a report, to look at where we called the home and left a message and didn't actually speak with anyone. If there's other steps we could do in those cases where there are young children, particularly special education children who are not in school. If we had, you know, a backup plan, I know with our children, we have multiple contact information. You know, we have an emergency, if we can't reach your parent, you know, we have all, that maybe we should expand the protocol. And I'm not dictating that, I'm just looking for suggestions. So I don't feel strongly if we, if the rest of the body wants to move forward on this particular bus company or we could take this out for further study, see what other options might be out there for us and just vote on the rest of them. I'm open to what other people think, but that was the intent of my motion, those two pieces.
Well, I guess the subject matter is the same, but your motion could stand alone by itself and still be, you know, we'd still pass the motion regardless of what we do on permission to enter. But it, okay, is that?
Yes, we'd just be making a decision to go with this particular bus company as long as, and Mr. Fish maybe can assure us, that this quote is for the newer buses that have that extra layer of protection, that the bus driver must go to the back of the bus before he or she can leave the bus and make sure that there's nobody on the bus.
Okay, Mr. Fish, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I talked with our, with the current contractor, SPNR, and they have indicated that they're going ahead and purchasing, they have on order the child safety feature that you're talking about, so they can add it to the buses. And then, so if we stay with the current contractor, SPNR, they have assured us they are moving forward with adding that safety feature. So I just wanted, either, any, either option takes into consideration that safety feature we'll have. Either option that we look at.
Mr. Genner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no problem with moving forward on this change. I think, you know, the incident in question here is truly inexcusable and I think that it makes sense for us to look for another contractor here. But my question is, contractually, are we, are we able to do this? I mean, I think we're under contract with this company. Do we have the right to leave them and go to somebody else? And what about financially? Is there any financial, you know, do we have to pay more in order to do that?
Before we do that, could we hear from the three speakers before everybody kind of takes a position on this and then, you know, what the three speakers have to say won't really matter very much? Is that, is that okay? We have three, three people that want to speak on this. So who are the three people that are going to speak? Go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Dan Gaddad. I work for SPNR Transportation. I think I've been there for about twelve years now. And I've listened to a lot of media stuff and which I disagree with a lot of things. We do have a protocol. We go to the back of the bus and as we're walking down, we check the seats and we put a sign on the bus. That's what you're supposed to do. These buzzer things there, in the past, I've used them. They, there's times when they don't work, okay? So just to have that in mind, okay, because that's electrical. Electrical don't always last, okay? And, you know, for degrading the company and stuff, for what they do, we have meetings once a month, all the time. We do testing, you know, on every subject. One of them is, you know, for the safety of the children. I pray every day that I don't leave a kid on the bus. I have a special needs daughter, okay? And out of all the companies in Lowell that I've ever, ever had to deal with for her getting rides, SPNR would be the only company that I would send my daughter to, you know? I, I, I mean, I'm not just saying that or anything like that. They're a good company, very good. I take pride in what I do, but I pray every single day that I don't leave a child on the bus. But does anybody here in their whole life, people must make mistakes here every day. I know I do, you know? So just because of a driver making a mistake, it means the company has to suffer? No, I don't think that's right. I don't think it's right at all. Because of one person, who's to say that when you bring in the next company, that they don't end up with the problem? What are you going to do then, rebid the thing again? No, you can't do that. You cannot do that. It's, it's not right. It's not right. Nobody thinks of all these things. And by the way, if I remember last year, the company that bitted North Reading Transportation left the child on the bus last year on their bus. It was in the news, you know? So it happens. It happens everywhere. You know, there was a state that had a bus driver and a monitor on it and they still left the child on the bus. And they had a protocol too. So mistakes happen, you know? There might be something on your mind one day, you know what I mean? That, that, you know, you make a mistake. But everybody, you got to take into consideration, if you end up going for this bid, then you're stating you never, ever have a mistake in your whole life and that's a lie. Everybody has a mistake. I make mistakes every day, you know? And I know Billy, our boss, has talked to people, you know? He, he feels really bad for what happened. That could have been me. It could have been other drivers here, you know?
You're at three minutes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm the safety instructor at SPNR Transportation. I'm the one that runs the meetings once a month. We do go over using the bus empty signs. We have seat belts. I try to tell them, every time you finish a run, go fix all your seat belts. That's a reminder to check your bus at the same time. It was a mistake. I do want to let you know that we did already purchase the child checkmate alarms. We're in the process of scheduling to get them installed now. And the same as Dan said, it was just one person making a mistake. The whole company shouldn't be penalized for that. We have a lot of good drivers. I've worked for this company for like twenty-five years. Like Dan said also, the other company, it's happened to them also, the company that you're thinking of bringing it in. It happens to a lot of companies. The alarm system is probably the best thing. And we've already, we're already in the process of doing that. And I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there a third speaker?
Hi, my name's Bobby Shepherd. I've been there for twenty-two years. I do have a child safety button on my bus. I have one of the newer buses. Been there a long time, a lot of good drivers. Just nervous if people are going to still have a job. Wonder what's going to happen in the future. Been with the office for a long time. They're more like family. Wonder if they're still going to be there? What's, what's the changes? Looking for answers and don't know what's going on, if people are going to be out of work. Just trying to get some answers and see what's going on. Just to represent the SPNR name. Billy's a good boss, never had a problem. You know, for somebody that made a mistake, that didn't do their job, it reflects on the seventy-five, eighty drivers that we have. You know, so it just looks bad on us and we're just trying to see what we're going to get for answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Genner?
So I guess we can go back to my question, but I do want to say that, sure, I understand people make mistakes and certainly we all make mistakes and doing something like this doesn't mean we don't make mistakes. But I do want to know, so can you, before we get to the other part of my question, what is the rationale? What is the rationale for making this change?
We've had performance issues with SPNR Bus Company. The issues related to scheduling buses at the start of the school year, as well as this current incident. So the city, to answer the question that you posed, can the city terminate the contract? The city may terminate SPNR contract at any time with or without cause upon thirty days written notice to the other party. We were considering on making a recommendation to change at the start of the next school year. However, after the most recent incident, it caused us to consider to move up that recommendation to now. Another option for the school committee to consider is to bid it out for next school year. So we have essentially two options. One option is to move on this and the start date would be after winter break. Or the second option would be to move, to rebid the contract or bid the contract and that would be for the start of next school year. In our discussions with NRT, we discussed, assuming the SPNR routes, there would be savings from overhead and other efficiencies that would reduce the costs. The bus rates would remain the same as what are currently charged by SPNR, but there would be savings from reduced overhead as well as other efficiencies totaling over... That's, that's in your memo. The change will take place after winter break if you select this option. We would provide written notice, giving notice to the SPNR within, with the thirty-day requirement.
And financially, it's a, it's a wash financially?
Financially, there would be savings about a hundred, I have in your memo, a hundred and twenty...
Seven.
Hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
Okay. So a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in savings as well with this change?
As well, and it would be brand-new buses.
Brand-new buses, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in savings. Okay, that's all for now, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further discussion? Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did the business office reach out to any other vendors besides the vendor that we use for regular ed?
No, all the other, as you know, we bid out the NRT contract this year. There was only one bidder, NRT. It takes a large bus company to be able to handle this activity.
Sure.
So there, there wasn't any other bidders that we called or we knew of.
Okay. Is there, is there the opportunity to perhaps award a one-year contract with the option to renew year two and three? Because my, my concern is that perhaps we're, we're going with what's easiest to address the problem and I think perhaps we could receive formal communication from, from SPNR as well as a formal proposal from NRT and anybody else that's interested to provide this service for us next year. And if we could, we could perhaps refer that to the Transportation and Finance Subcommittee and do that within the timeframe of a thirty-day notice for, for a December start. I think we do have enough time to make that happen. But is that an opportunity to do a one-year with the option to renew?
The consider, the consideration would have to be asked of, of the vendor that we're negotiating with. Quite frankly, it's a large investment.
Yeah.
Multi-million dollar investment. And the company would want a, the assurance that they would have a contract to spread the cost over many years. So our current negotiations, which are ongoing, what we talked about was a three-year commitment with two one-year options for option, for year four and year five. And that would mirror the contract we have with the NRT for regular transportation.
Okay.
The other, the other consideration here, quite frankly, is the lead time on buses. You need to give the manufacturer of the bus enough lead time so that we can, the buses would be delivered and ready to go for the start of, after winter break. Conversely, if you wanted to more time and wait, you can just defer this to the start of next school year and then that would give you enough time to solicit different quotes and do a formal RFP or bid. It's not required, but you have the option to do so.
Okay. I'll defer to my other colleagues for questions and I'll get back to that. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Can you describe for me the difference between the new vehicles that would be purchased and the child, I don't know what it's called, the, the, the system that, that the current vendor is talking about installing? What's the difference between those two in terms of the specific safety situation?
The, the child checkmate, it's called.
I was almost there.
I'm a former chess player, so when I heard checkmate, I thought, wow, this is interesting. That can be added on to an existing bus. So it doesn't have to be a brand-new bus. So the current vendor said, at SPNR, that he had ordered the child checkmate and would be installing it on all his buses. Now, when we talked with NRT, he said all his buses have the child checkmate add-on feature.
So, so they'd be purchasing, I'm just trying to understand if there's a difference between what NRT would be purchasing in terms of a new bus? Is that like a factory-installed child checkmate? Does that function in a different way? Or is it really just an add-on no matter what? Whether it's a new bus or an old bus, the child checkmate is just an additional thing that happens after sale?
I do have the owner of the company in the audience and that is a question that I'd like to pose to him as more experienced with this.
That'd be great.
John McCarthy, would you come to the podium? Could you answer?
Good evening.
Ms. Martin's question regarding, is there a difference between a factory install or just adding it on to an existing bus down the, after?
Sure. A factory-installed, let me just start. I started putting child checkmates in my vehicles fifteen years ago. Every single, I have fifteen hundred vehicles in the state of Massachusetts and every single one has it. And there was a reference made to that we had a child that was left on a bus last year. We didn't. What caught that child, what, what ended up finding that child is that child checkmate. We know people make mistakes. We know people get distracted. The reason why I put those child checkmates in those buses at that time was for that reason. That being said, the vehicle, the newer vehicles that are, that are installed manufacturing, I believe is a better system. Child checkmate came out as an aftermarket. We had numerous problems when we first bought the aftermarket child checkmate. I have them in every one of my vans. If I have a child checkmate that's broken, my vehicle's downed. It doesn't work, we don't call it out. You don't, you don't ask for it in your contracts. But I, as a, as a company owner, from experience, knowing things can happen, I know if I have a vehicle with a child checkmate that doesn't work, we don't send that vehicle out. The newer bus, I mean, the new bus speaks for itself. They're brand, they're brand-new vehicles, they're, they're efficient, they're... The reason why we're able to assume over the rate that we first talked about with Gary is, is, you know, because they're so efficient and because we have so many vehicles in the area, we're able to reduce cost by reducing the routes. That's what we're looking at. That we actually can combine some vehicles to reduce the cost and actually take some vehicles and put them in other places where you need them. So we were asked to look at it, we did that and we gave our proposal. And we're ready to go forth with that proposal. The reason why I asked for a extended contract, again, it's a two-million-dollar purchase. I spoke to the manufacturers, we have buying power with them. I buy over two-hundred buses a year with them. I met with them, they assured me. I met with them, they assured me, Gary has a letter in his hands that those buses will be delivered December 20th so that we can put all the equipment that we need to put in. And as it goes for the drivers that are in this room, just so you know, you've been driving for 20 years, we respect who you are, we know that, you know, your fear is about losing your job. If you meet all the requirements for a special needs driver or a school bus driver in the state of Massachusetts in the city of Lowell, you're not going to lose your job. I feel bad that this happened. I know the Covellucci family, Bill Covellucci, his father, helped me get in business. Young Bill used to work for me, but I'm surprised he's not here today to at least answer some of your questions, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
I'm sorry. I just wanted to, could you explain, you mentioned that the child that was left on one of your buses was identified through the checkmate system. Can you explain how that happened?
Okay, so the primary purpose of the child checkmate is to get the driver to get up out of their seat. So the driver's driving, you've got a bunch of kids in the back, and they fall asleep. Depending on, some are on medication, for whatever reason, they fall asleep. Drivers can be distracted. Somebody's child could be sick at home and the driver decided to come to work. Somebody's, you could be arguing with your spouse and not be thinking about your job. Well, fifteen years ago, I heard about this child in New Mexico that this happened to, and that inspired me enough to go out and purchase child checkmates. So the primary purpose of the child checkmate is to get the driver to get up out of their seat, walk to the back of the bus, and push that button. Now, if he fails to follow that procedure, or she follows, doesn't follow that procedure, and if for some reason the monitor doesn't catch it, because the monitor is not responsible for pushing that button, if they exit the bus and turn the bus off, that bus will sound like you're trying to steal it. Lights, horns, action. That's exactly how the process goes. When we have, when they were saying that we had a child that was left on a bus, it happened. I knew it could happen, that's why I installed the child checkmate. The driver didn't follow the procedure. Driver went to the school, pulled back into the bus lot, parked the bus, child was on the bus for an extra fifteen minutes. When he got off the bus, he walked into the office. Before he got into the office, the horn started beeping. We terminated that driver. Again, it does happen. I'm not saying it'll never happen ever, ever again, but I believe with the management that we have and the systems that we've put into place, that will make sure that we reduce the risk of that ever happening again, so.
Thank you. This isn't a public hearing. Okay? He was called to the microphone. That's different from just raising your hand. Mr. Gendron?
I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Doherty? Everybody's all set? All right, so first we'll vote on the motion, then on permission to enter. If there's no objection, on your motion.
Could I just ask, how long have we been working with SPNR?
It's been, I don't have the exact date, but I'm believing it's 20 years is what I've been told. I would have to verify that, but that's what I've been told.
All right, that's enough. On the motion, okay? Roll call on the motion, on Ms. Doherty's motion. The motion, I'll just read it again. Request that the superintendent provide the committee with a report regarding alternative options for special ed transportation services that will provide newer buses for the district as well as include any suggested changes to current protocols to improve student transportation safety.
Ms. Martin? Mr. DiCotto?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi. Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
Okay, so now on the permission to enter.
So the motion is clearly asking for some additional information, and I know that there is something that, you know, we have this, you know, three paragraphs that were provided to us on Monday as part of the regular packet. I think there were some questions that came up tonight I'd like some additional information on. So before we make a decision, I don't feel comfortable making a decision on changing a contract this important unless we have some ample opportunity to discuss and to get the information. So, I mean, I would make a recommendation that we hold that contract, the permission to enter in abeyance for right now. Schedule, I don't know if it's finance or, I'm not sure what the appropriate subcommittee would be, so I'd entertain any motions for anyone who wants to host this, but so that we can have an open conversation and be able to get the information we need to make a well-founded decision. Because I think there've been some points brought up tonight that I'd like to get into a little bit more, and I think that that would lead us to a better end decision. I'd make that in the form of a motion. I know it was very long, but.
Your motion is to delay action on this part of the permission to enter.
Look at that, see, exactly.
Until the next meeting?
And request that the administration pull for a subcommittee so that we can have the opportunity to ask additional questions and get additional information.
Okay. Which subcommittee? Did you want to send it to a subcommittee or you just want?
I would like a subcommittee, but I don't know which one. I'd be open, operations, finance and operations. There you go.
Finance.
Finance.
Okay, so a second to the motion, second by Mr. Gignac. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will support your motion, and I do want to thank you people for coming down here tonight because, you know, you did educate me on some, a few things, but you also need to understand that, you know, we, sometimes things happen in an organization, in a corporation that reflect badly on people who are, you know, good employees and vigilant employees. So, you know, it's, whatever we do here, it shouldn't be, you know, it shouldn't be seen as a reflection on anybody. But we also have a district to run, and we answer to the people of the city, and incidents like this, you know, that reflects pretty badly on us, right? Because, you know, we got a promise that this kind of thing wouldn't happen, so, and we're talking about new buses, and we're talking about saving a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. We have great financial needs in this district. We have to consider that. So I support the idea of more discussion, but I hope you understand that, you know, if we take this action, it shouldn't be a reflection on you. I realize that there might be consequences, but we have to run our district and we have to do our job here, so I appreciate you coming down, though. And we'll see you at the subcommittee meeting.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Yes.
If not, I would, I just, yes.
Right here.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you. And just as a response to this motion, if we could also have, if it's necessary, a recommendation from the Special Education Department. I'm curious to see if there's any, have been any issues related to services with this contractor, but also I think a written response from the existing provider related to their protocols, you know, I haven't seen this contract in a while. So just what they're going to improve, I understand they're going to put new equipment in, but what does that mean? What additional trainings are going to occur and what the other provider is proposing as well? I think it's unfortunate that we're in this position, but it's unacceptable to have a child sit on a bus for five hours, and we are truly lucky that nothing else happened to that student.
Excuse me, you're out of order. All right? Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Gignac.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fifteen minutes is far too long, but I, as chair of the finance committee, I'm happy to host this meeting, and I think we can do it before our next full school committee meeting and take action that evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Could I just ask you to, Deputy Superintendent, why was this recommendation, why is the superintendent making this recommendation? It's beyond just the incident of last week, isn't it?
Yes, as Assistant Superintendent Frisch mentioned, there were some scheduling concerns that were articulated at the start of the school year relative to us providing information to SPNR and not having the students scheduled on the buses as we had anticipated.
Okay, and if we were to vote for this, the superintendent's recommendation, this would not be implemented until January, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Why is that?
Yeah, that seems like a natural change, and it takes time to order the buses, so the NRT had indicated that he can have the buses delivered by December 15, 2017, if acted upon. So that is why it wouldn't start until the next calendar year.
Okay, so we have nothing to lose by waiting two weeks for more information?
That's correct. My understanding, that's correct.
Go ahead.
Do you want to?
Could you go by the mic?
I'm not saying this to waive your opinion either way. Listen, I like Billy, I like the Covellucci family, and I was speaking to her this morning. If you don't make this decision tonight, those buses will not be delivered in time for the transition. They're being made. If you go to another contractor, these buses are very specific, they're made for the, for a specific use, and they're not a bunch of them hanging around. If you asked me to do this over the summer, I had thirty-two of them hanging around, but we sold them. So, long story short, I talked to the manufacturer, if I don't put an order in by next Thursday, they will not be delivered on the time that he guaranteed me that they would, just a timeframe for manufacturing.
So, just so that we're clear, the, what he indicated was that the buses would be delivered in early December.
Early December, which will give us?
Yeah. If we wait the two weeks?
Right.
That doesn't mean that they'd be delivered at the end of December?
Well, I can't, I'd have to call him and find out, but understand, they have to go through a Massachusetts state inspection, one, then the registry has to come out and check them, two, we have to put GPS, it's going to take us a little while to prepare them to get them on the road. If you want to start the day that we come back from Christmas break.
Okay. Mr. Gendron?
Mr. Mayor, we could do, we could do a subcommittee of the whole before next Thursday, and then we could take action on this motion right at the subcommittee if we wanted to fulfill the request to get more information and still take action before next Thursday.
Okay, did you want to suggest?
So I guess I'd suggest we change it to a subcommittee of the whole before next Thursday so that we could gather more information and take action.
All right. Ms. Martin? You good with that?
Yep, that's fine. I'm just looking at next week, I don't know what the schedule is like, so.
Okay. So the mayor's office will have to put together the committee of the whole, the subcommittee of the whole. All right, so we have a substitute motion to refer this to a committee of the whole at a time to be determined within the next week. Do we have a second to that motion? Second by Ms. Martin. Discussion on the motion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. The rest of the permission to enter? Do we have a motion approved? Motion approved by Mr. Gignac. That motion's already been made and seconded. Discussion on the motion. Roll call.
Ms. Martin? Mr. DiCotto?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Mayor Kennedy? Yes.
Five years, two absent, approved.
Okay, the next motion is by Ms. Doherty, requesting superintendent provide the committee with an update on diversity staffing initiatives and results to date. Second by Mr. DiCotto. Ms. Doherty?
I think the motion pretty much speaks for itself. I know we had put in some additional funds to recruit, and I'm just looking for an update on what we've, what results we've seen so far. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, all opposed, so voted. The next motion is by Mr. Gendron, requesting the superintendent revisit the plan to provide the LRTA bus passes for LHS students with financial need. Second by Mr. Gignac.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion does not speak for itself, so let me add some color here. We had, this motion came before the body once before, we supported it, and we got a report back from the administration, it's kind of documenting the costs around doing that, the kind of worst-case costs. But what I would like to see is, I would like to see a plan to implement this. I would like to make sure that we have, every kid at Lowell High School has an opportunity to take an LRTA bus to school. You know, there had been reports in the past of kids who live a couple of miles from the school, can't afford an LRTA pass, don't have a ride, so they got to walk to school, you know, in the snow and everything else, and that's just not right. And I think we have the resources to leverage LRTA, since our high school is downtown, we can leverage LRTA and get those kids' transportation if they truly need it. So I think the information we got said the bus pass was $20 a month, and if you do the math and you provided every kid at Lowell High School a bus pass, it's somewhere around a half a million dollars, which is obviously more than we want to spend. But I think that if you take it a step further and you say, okay, let's remove the kids who are within a one-mile radius, or maybe it's, you know, that distance is TBD, but nonetheless, we remove a big chunk of the student body by doing that. And then I think that if, with the rest of the students, if you truly looked at financial need, you could reduce that number even more. So, you know, I don't want to dictate the process by which you, by which you do this, but I really want to make sure that any kid who truly can't afford a bus pass and lives a good distance from Lowell High School can get one and drive, and get a ride to Lowell High School. That's my goal.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, all opposed, so voted. Next out of reports of the superintendent, we have the monthly financial report. Any discussion, Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. Where on here did we decrease the budget related to the supply line?
The eight hundred, six hundred thousand dollars that we were talking about, that was in suspense. So, and then there's 250,000 dollars is coming from the city. So the 850,000 was not put into the suspense account. That was going to take care of the increases in the salaries that are due to increase mid-year. So we haven't altered, changed the budget from what we had presented, except reduced the suspense account from 850,000 down to zero. So that's where the money is sitting. And then we will make adjustments, as we do budget adjustments throughout the year, to then reduce the money, reduce the money in the areas that were voted on. Now, the supplies, as you know, that was voted to reduce the supplies, but it was left up to the administration to be able to find other budget line items to reduce. So that's yet to be determined.
Okay, can you keep us informed of that?
I certainly will.
Thank you. And was there an issue at the beginning of the year related to custodial supplies?
There was, yes, the custodial supplies, there was, there were purchase requisitions printed, they, apparently, they sat on someone's desk, and there was a delay there, someone was on vacation.
Okay.
That got resolved, and the supplies got issued. So there was some delay.
Okay, it was related to me that it was a result of us cutting supply budget?
No, no.
And I know that wasn't the case, I just want to make sure that that was?
Absolutely not.
Out in the public. I also have a question perhaps for the deputy superintendent, and it's related to this report in finances. Are we planning anything related to the possibility of an influx of students from Puerto Rico?
So we have received information from the state relative to the potential for students arriving. We're working with the state right now, and we'll have more information forthcoming. There has been some communication relative to that, and we have seen one or two students coming into the district. two students coming into the district at this point who are coming to stay with family. They are under the state regulations. They are deemed homeless and we'll provide them with the transportation that they need and any of the services in the schools.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Just a follow-up question to Mr. Gignac. So, when we talked about the supplies, I do believe that the committee was pretty clear. We were talking about central office supplies. We were not talking about supplies that would either impact the custodians or anything at the school sites. So, just to be clear, we were talking about a central office focus for those cuts.
Exactly.
Okay. Just wanted to be, just, I know you guys know that, but for anyone who's watching.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you two, the assistant superintendent of finance, I have a question on the, at the bottom of the monthly budget report, the first page, you mentioned the water and sewer account will be reimbursed by the Food Service Revolving Fund at year-end. And then later on the report, on page four, you have that water and sewer item, 537600, and the negative of $43,448.39. Can you explain that to me? I'm not even sure why we're paying water and sewer. And if we are paying water and sewer out of our budget, why is a percentage of it being charged back to food services?
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer that question. The bottom of the memo talks about, explains all the negative balances. So, because that was a negative balance, it prompted a footnote here so that where you read the water and sewer account will be reimbursed by the Food Service Revolving Fund. I want to call to your attention, this was part of the budget that was approved. We have about $1.8 million from the Food Service Revolving Fund that reimburses indirect cost. So, the water and sewer, water and sewer account is part of the utility cost that is reimbursed by the food service because the food service program does utilize utilities.
So, does that mean we're paying the city for the water and sewer or it doesn't come out of maintenance of effort then?
Those, I'm not exactly sure who we pay on the water and sewer, but it's a direct charge. So, it is charged, it's not part of the maintenance of effort. This is a direct charge that we are paying, unlike the electricity, which is maintenance and effort. Electricity is not the water and sewer.
Great, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll move on to the next report, which is overtime payments. Any discussion regarding overtime payments, Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question related to, I understand the rationale behind the additional pay for the clerks and the Family Resource Center. With that additional monies, was that just charged to the salaries line? I know that there's no general overtime line item.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so, okay. And another question, stipends, are those are not included in this report, correct?
Correct. This is custodial and clerical.
Okay. But if somebody was to receive, if an administrator was to receive a stipend outside of their contract, shouldn't they appear on here?
I can add that to the, to this report.
Okay. And then if an employee is guaranteed, I wouldn't consider it additional pay, but there's a few people on here I think probably shouldn't, but then there's more that I should probably should, but I'll, we could talk about that offline. But if you could just include the, everybody else that...
Everybody else, certainly.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess one of the things that jumped out at me was, and I don't really understand why the number would get so high. We have one senior custodian who got $3,176.42 in overtime pay in July and $3,920.61 overtime pay in August. So, that's a total of $7,097.3 for July and August in overtime for one particular custodian at one particular school, the Rogers School. And I noticed you had a little footnote about moving central office saves substantial money.
Yes.
Can you explain to me what, I mean, $7,000 in two months of overtime? If you figure 20 working days for each month, so you take 40 working days divided by that, it's $177 a day in overtime. It just seems like a lot and I'm trying to understand what, what was that in July and August?
Okay, I'd be, I'd be happy to explain that. That's atypical. As you know, the summer is, is a very hectic time period, especially when you're having construction done at your school. So, the Rogers had six classrooms that were remodeled during the summer. This particular custodian had, was short one custodian in his building, so he had, he was entitled to man out overtime hours per the union contract. In addition, he had CTI overtime hours. Now, there's an after-school program at the Rogers, STEM Academy, and that went from three to six. His workday ended at three because he worked seven to three in the summertime. So, that was three hours of overtime every day, which normally split between other custodians at the Rogers, but since they were short one, one custodian, he ended up taking that, those hours. In addition, there was overtime hours to be approved, that were approved for cleaning. The major remodeling ended the weekend before the start of school, so he had to work over the week, weekend to get the school ready for the start of school. In addition, he was part of a crew that moved the central office from 144 to 155, as well as other moves to, for the new CSA day school in Methuen. So, by the way, I would like to point out that we had a contract, contractor give us a quote on the, on the moving cost and that cost was $20,000. We ended up spending $6,000 on our custodians for overtime. We reduced costs by $14,000. So, I know it looks a lot, but there was a lot done and it was a combination, no one thing added up to that $7,000 you talked about.
Ms. Doherty? Is that, okay. Any further discussion on item two? If not, we'll move on to item three, which is the nursing staff report. Any discussion? If not, we'll move on to item four, the security system status. Mr. Decodo?
Could we go back to the nursing for a second?
Sure.
Thank you. I had a question. Is the person here?
Good evening. So, I'm Beth Moffett. I'm the nurse coordinator out of the Health Department.
I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
First, how often are school nurses absent? Not specific ones, just in general. And do we have a pool of substitute school nurses to fill those places?
We do. And unfortunately, I don't have the number of that. You know, we do get absences and I have four float nurses plus three clinical managers so that we staff it that way if we have somebody that's absent. I have a pool of nine subs. They're not really available. A lot of them do just one day a week and there's only one sub that will allow me to call her in the morning, so everybody else is booked. So, if it's a personal day or something like that. So, for sick calls, we do it with the floats that I have.
Okay. I have one other question. I don't know if it was a, just a typographical ever or anything like that. And I noticed all of the nursing, the nurses that you had listed all had RNs after their names and there's one name that didn't have an RN. I was wondering if that was just an omission?
It must be because they all have to have an RN. They do. They actually all have to have a BSN, so some have BSNs and some have MSN.
Okay. And the last thing is just kind of a comment, and I really appreciate the fact that you gave us all of those different cities and towns, what they pay their nurses and so forth. And it's kind of telling, I think, for us to observe just how much our nurses are getting paid in Lowell compared to our surrounding towns. We start, we start off actually higher than everyone, but then we're left in the dust after that. So, I'm sure that that has a lot to do with a lot of people just leaving on us.
Right.
And that hurts us. So, I really think we should be looking at that more closely in terms of what are we, what are we paying our nurses and why aren't they staying? And it kind of, these numbers are telling.
And we do actually have, you know, I have since July of 2016, I've had 11 people that have moved on, but when I actually did the math and looked at it, four of them left for more money in other surrounding districts. Two of them were retirees, two of them went back for MSN, one went for a different position and one left because the, they were offered a job a mile from their home.
Kind of hard to turn that down. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes.
Mr. Decodo, anything else?
Anything else.
You all done?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with that. So, are we down two nurses currently, the floating nurses? Is that correct?
So, currently, we're down two float nurses and I actually offered one and the nurse accepted this week. She has her physical scheduled tomorrow, so hopefully we'll be on board in three weeks. And then I have another nurse that we, that just got mailed her offer letter on Monday, so I think I'll be hearing from her because she's been emailing me, so she's anxious. I know she wants the job. So, we'll have another one on board. However, since that happened, I've had two more resignations. One is a retirement and one is to take a position at Lowell General. So, I'm still hiring and still looking.
And I think this, I mean, as I recall, last year it was eight that we were down with school staff.
We were down seven at the start of the school year.
It's an ongoing issue because we're not competitive in our salaries. But the last question I wanted to ask about nursing is, do we have the coverage for the field trips?
No.
We have students who have special needs. Oftentimes, they need a nurse with them and we can't be not letting students go on field trips because...
So, luckily, to my knowledge, that has never happened. We have...
Has happened in the past, definitely. Hopefully, it's not happening, but...
We, we, the city, the school department contracts with Commonwealth, so when we have a field trip, there's a protocol in place where they notify Mary Sheehan in advance and she sets up a nurse to go on the field trip with the students. So, it's not my nurses that go because we don't do one-on-one nursing. We're general ed nursing, so we don't do one-on-one nursing. So, someone from there goes. On occasion, we have had either the nurse not show or somebody forgot to email Mary Sheehan that we need a nurse and knock on wood, we've always had a float nurse available to send. So, we do do that in a pinch. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion on the nursing staff report?
Okay.
If not, we'll move on. Thank you. We'll move on to the security system status. Any discussion on the security system status? Hearing none, we'll move on to the list of eligible teachers. Any discussion regarding the list of eligible teachers? Hearing none, we'll move on to the personnel report. Any discussion regarding the personnel report? All right, at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to accept the superintendent's reports five, 7.1 through 7.6. And place, place, place them on file. Do we have a motion of that effect by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Gendron? Discussion on the motion? All in favor, all opposed, so voted. Next, the last superintendent report is home education, which requires a roll call vote. Do we have a motion approved? Motion approved by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Decodo. Discussion on the motion, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Decodo?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
Next, under new business, we have a vote to accept a grant, grant award in the amount of $1,370 to the Butler School from the GE Igniting Minds Program. Do we have a motion to accept by, by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Decodo? Discussion, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Decodo?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
Next, we have approval of an educational research request. Do we have a motion approved? So, motion approved by Mr. Gendron, seconded by Mr. Decodo. Discussion, Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I was just curious if we have any of the, kind of like the instrument that Ms. Duder is going to be using, some of the background information. I mean, obviously, she's coming into a brand-new position and I applaud her ambition to want to do this right now because that's got to be a lot. But just to, you know, the question she's going to be asking, if we could get a little more background information on that?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Decodo?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
Next, under convention and conference requests, we have two requests. Do we have a motion to approve the requests by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Gendron? Discussion, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Decodo?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
That concludes the agenda. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Gignac. All in favor, all opposed? Stand adjourned.